Yeah, actually, we're just releasing it, I think today, the marketing team is releasing it. It is IT related. And you know what? To give you an idea of what it is, the name of the podcast is The Broken Agenda. So it's, it's every topic is IT in nature, but generally speaking, about halfway through, I go off on a tangent, which I, which I've been known to do, and then the whole thing falls apart. So it's really, it's a little bit having fun, a little tongue in cheek with IT. But we try to get a lot of good information out there. I think our first episode we're releasing, we have 12 recorded. And we're releasing the first one now, and it's on 5G. So just impact on information technology, homes, businesses, you know, what it's going to look like in the future, you know, what it's going to do right now. So I mean, it's neat stuff. You know, it's like any podcast, you never know if you'll ever actually have anybody that watches it, but you hope. You know, maybe you'll find some people that like your style or like your information and it goes somewhere.
Yep.
It's gotta be a passion project. It's gotta be a passion project, right? That's what we're doing, right, Danielle?
Yeah.
So we don't even know, at least you have a podcast, so we don't even know exactly to call this. Maybe you have some ideas.
No, you know what? It took me 12. The reason we didn't release it yet, it took me 12 episodes to come up with a name. So I am not your guy. With a mess.
Yeah, because you don't want to rebrand, right? Like you want to be organized and, and professional and get it out there and not halfway through episode three say, you know what? We're going to change this to something else.
Well, look, if it helps, I would recommend calling it The Craig Stonaha Show. I think it'll, I think it'll really resonate with people. They'll like it.
Yeah.
You're gonna want that name, you're gonna want that name to be, you know, very resonant, right? So why don't you just introduce yourself, Craig?
Well, I, I am running for school board, as you mentioned earlier. I am a write-in candidate, which is always an uphill battle, and especially so in a larger district like Wilson. But my wife and I got involved earlier this year. We're a little late to the game. And like a lot of people that got involved this year, it revolved around COVID and equity. I mean, the masking policies, the equity policies, and some of the, the financial issues that are going on this year were the icing on the cake. But we really started doing our homework and really started throwing ourselves into research, and we were not happy with what we uncovered. So, and my, my wife is my campaign manager. She has been unbelievably amazing. She's been working with the Wilson leadership team to try to coordinate people and to, and to get the word out about the topics and our platform. And we've just been meeting with people and, and just trying to educate at this point. I mean, I think the biggest on the equity side, the biggest argument we get is that is a theoretical thing. You know, it's a college level course, and it's a theoretical thing, and I guess you're trying to keep it out of Wilson. You want to make sure it never gets there. And our response is, it's already there. And we have, you know, videos that have been leaked to us from teachers. We have photos of bulletin boards that are showing BLM posters and Marxist-style posters. You know, we have testimonies from people where we can't drop names because they are for fear of losing their jobs. But that had leaked this information about what's going on in classrooms. We know about anti-bias, anti-racial trainings that are already happening with staff in multiple different ones. And the really key part here is that my wife is formally trained in this exact industry. So she is an internationally recognized sales enablement and management trainer. So one of the things that she started doing last year was getting certified in CRT spin-off courses, because she was being asked, she has a lot of very large clients. She does work with Facebook. She does work with Coca-Cola. She does work with Liftmaster. And they wanted to explore this stuff. And so she got certified in dozens of these courses. She's certified in hundreds, hundreds of courses. But dozens of these courses, and she ultimately made a huge financial sacrifice. And the reason she refused to train them, the reason she just turned down any work related to these programs was because, in her words, not mine, "I will never train a course that proposes a problem but has no solution." And I think that was a very poetic way to put it. And that's very much what these types of programs are. It's all about stewing in a problem. And in fact, this past school board meeting, we found out that it's even more than that for Wilson. For Wilson, it's a lot about finding a problem. So they're openly saying that they, they said it in the last school board meeting. We're actually releasing on my website and on our social media, the recordings along with descriptions of what we're, what our interpretation is. But they're openly saying that they don't have specific problems, but they know they're there. And once we have an equity policy in place, and we can form a committee, and we can look at everything through an equity lens, we'll find them.
So your school's going based on no data, correct?
I'm sorry, what's that?
They're not going based off data. They didn't, they didn't have an investigation that led them to statistics to prove that there is a need for the equity policy. Is that what you're saying?
Absolutely. Not only that, but one of the school board meetings at the last meeting, one of the school board members actually read a letter that was sent to him by an African-American student that graduated, I believe, last year. And she was saying that she's personally offended by these types of equity policies because she had a wonderful experience at Wilson. She never encountered any type of racial discrimination or issues with equity, and she's now in college and she's doing phenomenally. And he read the letter, and it was, it was essentially dismissed by a number of board members. But that's a lot of the feedback we're getting is we're not seeing this in the school district. This is not a problem that we have. We're not saying it's not a problem somewhere else. We're not saying that other school districts may not have something they have to deal with. We're saying that we're concerned about Wilson, and Wilson doesn't have anyone clamoring for these types of policies. And I think one of the school board members did a phenomenal job, and his name was Mr. Case. And I believe it was him, but he said, "Well, if we don't have any data," as you were saying, Danielle, "and we don't have any hard facts that are driving this, then why don't we just start looking if we do find problems? And if they're just small problems, why don't we deal with them on a case-by-case basis instead of generating a large overreaching policy that changes the entire way that we look at education and the entire way that we look at, at staff development?" And I thought that was brilliant. I think that's really what we should be doing. If there are issues, we can fix them, but we don't seem to have an overreaching problem.
So yeah, you need more pragmatists on the board like that. Absolutely.
It's, and I was, I was impressed to see him say that. I think that's a good thing. That shows that we're heading in the right direction. We do have people that are, that are thinking. We do have some very good board members. We have some very bad ones. But, you know, we can't throw the baby out with the bathwater here. It's not all bad. We have some, some great opportunity here to, to make some change. But these votes are going right down party lines. I mean, it's, they're going five-four, one way or the other. So this is a tight board. And at any given moment, the whole thing could slip on us. So this, this is why I'm running is I, look, when I started my career, when, when I, when I went to grad school to get a master's in engineering, when I started my own companies, I did not write down that my ultimate goal is to take a non-paying government position and waste a ton of time every single month. Like, that was not my goal. So this is not something I'm doing for me. I have no political ambitions. You know, I, I don't, free time is not something that I, I swim in. I'm doing this for my daughter, and I'm doing it for all the other kids. I mean, my wife openly said when we started getting whips of this, that maybe we should just pull her out and put her in private school. And I said, "That's fine for her, but that abandons every other kid at Wilson." And ethically, that feels wrong. So I'm willing to put in the time and I'm willing to put in the effort. I'm willing to bring my personal resources to the table if it means that we can make a better experience for the kids at Wilson, Wilson Elementary Schools, middle schools, and high school. And I think, I think a lot of parents, it's all they want. They just want their kids to have a good education, and want their kids to have an opportunity to come out ready for the world.
Unfortunately, I think like a school board is party lines, and it shouldn't be, right? But, you know, putting that aside, if you have the right people on the school board, do you think that that can be the, you know, the blockade, if you will, right? The thing that protects the students? Is there some other flank we have to cover? Or is the board really where it stands?
Well, I think there's, the board is important. I mean, the superintendent works for the board, the administration works for the board. There's clearly an element of necessity and having control of the board to make sure the board stands for the community's values. That is, that's wildly important. But the more important thing, and, and this is what we're finding is, is the harder battle, is getting parents engaged. And if you have parents engaged, if they're sending emails, if they're going to the meetings, if they're speaking up, the board listens. We've seen a couple of moderates on the board flip over the last two or three months as parents came up and they made their case, and they argued vehemently and with passion, and they used facts. That'd be case in point. About three weeks ago, we were able to, and we had opposition, but we were able to get masks, masking. And masking is not a huge issue for me, but I, I do believe that parents should be responsible for the safety of their children. And I think medical decisions should be in the hands of parents. And they were trying to mandate masks for the entire school year, just make it, that's what it's going to be. There were, it looked like this vote was absolutely not going to go our way. But two months of speaking at the meetings, parents coming out, really kind of making their case and making it passionately, sending emails, contacting board members, they ended up making it optional, which I think was a huge win. And then it came up again last week, because I believe one of the board members was very upset that they lost and wanted to see if they could sneak it through again. And we won again. So now, again, it went four-four. One of the board members was missing. So it only passed because it couldn't find a majority rule, which is a scary way to win something. But, you know, you take the win, the win's a win. But, I mean, we are seeing a shift. It does matter, but we're also seeing a decline in parental attendance. We're seeing less people to meetings. I don't know if people are burned out. I don't know if it's vacations. I don't know what it is. But getting parental involvement, I think, is almost more important than having control of the board. Because the parents are really who's, who's driving the decision-making in the community. And it's very hard when you know that Wilson did a survey, an online survey, about a month ago. They released the results about three weeks ago. And 80% of all parents wanted masks to be optional. 80% of all students and 80% of all staff wanted the same thing. These are public results that they presented. So when you know that parents are engaged, and when you know what their opinion is, we're not talking 52, 48. I mean, 80% is a, is a vast majority, then people speaking up, it really has power. It makes the board realize that the community wants something, even if it's not necessarily what I was thinking, maybe I should rethink.
How are you getting parent involvement? Like, we, we have a group, right, of about 175 parents or taxpayers in our community. They don't necessarily need to be parents, where we share info and, you know, help one another, and we all have different motivators to speak at, at school board meetings. But what, what are you seeing, like, when you talk to parents and try to get them involved? Do they feel like you do the passion that you do? Do they see it as a concern? Do they not care?
You know, I think this is a lot like what we were talking about earlier. It does follow party lines a lot. I, I get a lot of agreement in person. I do get some haters on my, on my website and on my Facebook page that will come out. I mean, I've, I've been called names already. I, I believe I was called a, an ignorant gaslighter at one point, which was, which was fun for me. But, you know, I get there's a lot of passion around these things. And what we've been doing to try to get people motivated to actually show up is we've been working with the Burks County Patriots. Now, you know, they're, they're not Wilson only, but they have a large following. I believe their last meeting had 800 people at it. So there's, there's definitely a crowd there that can help you spread the word. We are working with the, the Burks County Moms for Liberty. They're pretty well organized. They have a sizable group. They support my candidacy, so we've been working with them. The Wilson Leadership Team, which has been put together recently with a bunch of parents in Wilson, they're all supporting the candidacy. The Burks GOP is supporting my candidacy. Take Back Burks, which is another local organization, is supporting the candidacy. So we spread the word through those organizations to try to hit their members. And then hoping that it gains traction. A lot of times, we're really just trying to get people to reach out and ask questions, because then we can have the conversation and let them know what we know. We are preparing a data dump here, probably over the weekend. Ahead of Monday, they're having an open town hall on equity. And the insider information we've gotten from some teachers is that they are trying to stack the meeting with pro-CRT people to make it look like the community wants CRT. Or not CRT, sorry. They're, they're openly saying CRT will never be in their school, but they want equity. So the data dump we're doing is we're going to start putting onto our, our blog and onto our website, a lot of these pictures, a lot of these testimonials, a lot of these letters, a lot of these things that we've gathered, videos over the last few months, and start sending it out to people and saying, hey, look, this is real. We, we need you guys to come on Monday. We need your support. You know, please, for the, for the love of God, get a babysitter if you have to, you know, do what you gotta do. Bring the kids if that's what it takes, you know, bring them along. But come out. These things can be fought now. Once they pass, I mean, you guys know as well as I do, getting something repealed is 10 times harder than fighting it before it gets passed. So now is the time to fight this.
Yeah. So ours was passed, right? And that's our, that's our problem right now is we can't, it, it'll be too hard to appeal it. So what we're going to do is put safeguards, at least, until we have the board members we need to change it.
Nice. That's a great idea. So just amend the policy.
Yeah, we need safeguards in place that, you know, no child or student or teacher, anyone, there should be no words used as oppressor or systematically or consciously unconsciously biased, things of that nature. So we outlined what we could that we think would be fair if we're going to keep this policy. But one thing I really found that hits parents are, are literature books. Because when you, no matter how much I say, well, they're attending this training and it has CRT in it, or they're reading this book with CRT in it, when I show them an elementary book that has the words transgender or sell your white soul to the devil, that seems to engage them a lot more and, and light the fire under them, I have to say. So I'm not sure if you or Lisa Marie looked through your school libraries, but there's a lot to be found.
No, I did actually. My wife just sent me a photo, and I have not had a chance. It was right before we got online here. I haven't had a chance to verify with her where it came from. But it was a photo of the rear jacket of a book that was basically along the lines that you're saying. So if, if she got that sent to her from one of the libraries, that would be amazing. If you're saying that that holds power, then we will use it. And that's, I appreciate the insights. Thank you.
So, and also No, go ahead, Craig.
I was gonna say to Danielle, if it helps, Danielle, I wrote my own equity policy, which really doesn't have the word equity in it at all. It's all equality, with all of those guardrails built in.
Yeah.
I could absolutely send that to you if it helps. I mean, you probably won't want to use it as it is, but it might give you some new terminology you can use. I stole a lot of it from the PA state bill.
Yeah, I stole mine from Texas, so.
Nice. Everything, everything good comes out of Texas. Very nice. Sorry, what were you gonna say? I apologize.
Yeah, no, no worries. That's, that's great. I'm glad, I'm glad you're penning out, because that's what you need to do, right? You can't expect other people to do the work for you, right? You have a couple minutes, break out the old bic, lick the tip, get that ball rolling, right? You know, that's, that's right it out. And I'm sure you banged it out on a word processor, Google Sheets, write the email, just send it over, right? Let's get it done. I love it. So you talked about school choice. In my mind, when you mentioned, well, why don't we just get them out, right? You said you and your wife saw this coming down the pike. Why don't we just get him out, or her out? I'm sorry. And you said that didn't feel right. Tell me a little bit more about that. That's interesting to me, because you have a choice in this country, right? That's very, we're very fortunate to have that. But, but you had a certain feeling about that choice. Tell me.
Well, and I, I do believe in the public schools. I was a public school kid, and so was my wife, and, and we both had, had good experiences, and I, I want it to be successful. I also am a huge proponent of school choice. And I'm a little shocked that we haven't been able to get that done in this country over the last 30, 40 years. But my main concern with school choice for this reason is that the kids that you leave in the public school, that you leave behind, which is, which is what you're doing. You're going a different direction. You're going to a different curriculum. You're teaching maybe different values, depending on which school you chose. They're not going to leave your child's life. They're not gone. And when they turn 18, they all get dumped back into the same society. And this creates an increased amount of division, as if we didn't have enough already. Now you have kids that are indoctrinated, that have absolutely no identifying factors to your kids. They're, they're speaking different languages. They're thinking different thoughts. They have different values and different standards. And they, they can't even communicate with each other. And if we think things are bad now, after a year and a half of, of social media and COVID kind of making things crazy, how bad it'll be in 10, 15 years when we abandon all these kids that don't have the option to go to a private school and to get another perspective that are so indoctrinated that they don't want to hear a word you have to say? I mean, there, there may not be any coming back from that. So my problem is not with school choice, and my problem is definitely not with pulling her out. My problem is with the end result of that decision 10, 15, 20 years from now, when we just keep forking our society and going in different directions. And I'm just not sure how you pull that back if people don't get involved now and say, no, no, no. I may still go to public school, but it is still critically important to me that your kids get a balanced education, just like mine does, so that we can still talk to each other. We can still communicate, and we can still work through real problems, not invented problems that we have to go looking for with fake policies.
I don't know what everybody else heard, but I heard a really strong call for unity, right? That was, that's great. I feel the same way, right? We can't have different groups, right? We need to be one nation, right? One people here. If they have a common, common set of values, that's what holds us together. Let me, let me ask you if I can. Do you mind if you mentioned on your site, you know, runaway spending, something to that effect, right? Is there anything specific you want to call out that people should know about that you have your eyes on, or something you're gonna do?
Well, it, it just happened, and it might be over. I don't know if I, if I were to win, if I even can influence this, we'd have to dig into it as a team. But we just saw almost a 6% tax hike in the Wilson School District, and Burks County, Pennsylvania, what a rural county. Burks County, Pennsylvania, I believe right now is ranked number two in taxes in the entire state of Pennsylvania. So we've got, I don't care how you measure this. We've got runaway spending going on in this county at our schools, enough that we are competing with Pittsburgh and Philadelphia, which is insanity to me. Now, Wilson just solved 5.6, 5.9, whatever percent increase in school tax rates because they're building a new auditorium. Now, an auditorium, in my opinion, is not a need, okay? Look, I want to have a great auditorium in my school, just as much as every other parent. And I think that having a place where the arts can thrive is a good thing. But I also think that if you don't have the money for it, if you weren't fiscally responsible to save, or if you weren't adept enough to work out a deal with a bank where you could borrow without burdening the taxpayers of paying for it, then you are not ready. Forcing these things now just because you want it is how we just keep digging the hole deeper. If you want it, there are ways to get it without burdening the taxpayers constantly with more and more debt and with more and more bills, and with higher rents and higher tax bills and higher mortgages and everything else. Now, it would, might be a different conversation if we were running out of classroom space. If we're at max capacity in elementary school and we have to expand it, okay, I still think we should have seen that coming. But these things do pop up sometimes, you know, very quickly, faster than a board can move. You know, maybe in a few years, you have a, a population boom. Those things are a little bit different. But an auditorium doesn't fall in that category. We could plan this better. We could make this a partnership with the community where we're not just taking their money to do what we like. We're working with them, and we're being fiscally responsible, and we're being fiscally solvent in our decisions and playing the long game. And I think that's what we're losing here, is we just have this tax-and-spend mentality, which is, it cannot last. Eventually, businesses will start leaving. I own a fairly large business and a couple of smaller businesses in the Wilson School District. There is only so much as a responsible principal of this business that I would be willing to absorb from a tax standpoint before it makes sense for me to leave. And that's not, I'm not leaving my community. I have employees to take care of. I have payroll to meet. You know, I have obligations. And at some point, you know, moving to a different town or a different state might solve some of the problems that I'm encountering as a business owner, and I have to make that decision. Homeowners do too. So if you start driving them away with high taxes, you eventually lose the power that you have as, from your tax base. You erode your own tax base, and that's going to just lead to more problems. And it's a downward spiral.
Yeah, I have one more question I'd like to ask. So I don't know how much you've researched the PSBA, which is the Pennsylvania School Board Association. But it seems to me, because what you're saying about Wilson is very similar to what we're dealing with in OJ Roberts School District. And we have no data that shows that we need an equity policy, but they feel the need for it, just like you said, right? No data, but let's just roll it out. And I found that majority of the push is coming from PSBA and the Pennsylvania Department of Education. So when you, and when you serve on a board, you're automatically enrolled in the membership for PSBA. So it's not even like board members have a say that, no, we, we don't want to partake. How do you think you are going to push back against PDE and PSBA when they say, no, we're, we're rolling this out nationally and you need to get on board?
Well, and, and I think you kind of answered this. And, and we did, I was actually just, before we got on this call, I was writing a blog article for my campaign page, talking about the policies that are being pushed down from the state level and the inconsistencies in what we're being told. So we were told in the last board meeting that they started working on equity in 2019. In mid-2021, they proposed their first draft of the equity policy, and it was a carbon copy from the state. So exactly what you're talking about. They pushed this thing down. So for a group of people that swear they've been working on this for a year and a half, the only thing they had to show for a year and a half's worth of work was something that was written for them by the state of Pennsylvania. So we don't always get the clear story, but as far as how you can push back, I think your strategy may in fact be the best. So there are times when they push down these types of policies and demand that you implement a version of them in order to get funding. And generally, if you don't get that funding, it, it, it's gonna hurt the, the most needy. So, I mean, you still have to pay your employees. You still have to pay your staff. You know, you still have to buy lunches. You still have to do all of your operating expenses. So what do you cut? You cut free breakfast. You cut free lunches. You cut vouchers. You know, you cut stuff that helps the kids in need the most. So the, the middle ground here, one, obviously, you want to get enough good, solid conservatives on school boards that they're going to push back against these policies. But that takes time. In the short time term, you just adopt the policy with so many guardrails on it that it's virtually has no teeth. So you write it so that there's no budget assigned to it. So these people have to volunteer their time to do it. They're not going to get any money. You write it so that it bans contractors and it bans individual literature that talks about racist training, racism training, any type of gender-based training. You know, you, you, you pull all these things out. You specifically call them out that they are not allowed. And what you're left with is basically a piece of paper that's unactionable. And at that point, you still technically qualify for your funding. You still get to help the kids that need to be helped. But you're not damaging the kids that are doing just fine in the process. And I think if enough school districts do that, it's going to start changing some thinking. You know, people are gonna start looking at, say, well, you know, we can push all the stuff down we want. They're just sidestepping us and ignoring us.
Yeah.
It will hurt their credibility.
They are radical. I don't know if you sat through any of the trainings, but it's definitely, it's definitely not what they're telling us our equity policy is in OJ. They're telling us it's, you know, to make every child feel included and to make sure there's representation, and they're getting everything that they need to succeed. But every training, and I've sat through hours, every training is regarding radical racial and social justice, to be an activist. And it's not even different minorities. It's mainly African-American, nothing else.
Yep.
So when, you know, when I spoke at our school board, I'm, I'm like, you're saying this, this is what you're showing us, this great piece of paper? But, but this is what we're finding, everything else that we think it is, and it really is. But one thing that the PSBA rolled out for equity was this framework. And I found out that they stole, not stole, I'm sorry, adapted the framework from Portland's school districts. So from home of, you know, Chad and Antifa, what does that have to do with Burks County or Chester County, Pennsylvania? Nothing.
And it doesn't. And I try so hard not to muddy the national politics with the local, because it is, it is, it definitely influences your thinking. It's something that I, I tried to draw a hard line between them. But you're right. It, it's, it's harder and harder to draw that line as they're pushing stuff out of Seattle and Portland and California. And we're forced to just blindly accept these things. And, I mean, I don't know about you, but we have a thriving, diverse, and very welcoming community here. I mean, I, I had an end-of-school party for my daughter's entire class. And I don't think I've ever seen a more diverse group of kids that all had a blast. The parents stuck around. I had a blast. There's, we're being told that we're living in, you know, 1940s Georgia, and it's just not true. And it's just not true. It, it's, it's a lie and it's insulting to everyone who gets called out. It's insulting to white people who are called racist just because they don't have enough melanin. It's insulting to black people who were told that they can't achieve because they're, they're oppressed. I mean, I, I, one of my best friends is an African-American doctor and he's like, I don't know what the hell this is even talking about. Cause I'm a doctor. I went through med school. He goes, I, he goes, you know, I, I drive a Mercedes. He goes, I'm having a good life. He goes, I'm living my best life. He's like, this is not the America I know.
It's, uh, I, you know, I think I said it in the beginning, it's a shame that things like the school board have become down party lines and it is political and the national things, right? I don't know what, I don't know what to call it, right? It's a, it, I want, I want to say mandate, right? Because it's cloaked, right? But things are coming down, um, into the school district and I think the board is an extremely important, um, safeguard to the whole entire community, right? So when you talk about local, um, you think of your local elections, but you know, maybe you don't think about the school board so much as, as having a lot of importance. I would say it has a lot of importance. And if you're going to be a writing candidate, um, you better come with some heat, right? And I think you are. Um, why, why are you going to win?
Why am I going to run?
Why are you going to win?
Why am I going to win? I, I don't, I try not to get too excited about winning, um, because I realize the obstacles I have to fight and I, and I respect them. But I will tell you, it, it's the message of what's happening right here. Here's, here's what I have noticed. Five years ago, and you guys correct me if I'm wrong here, because I've been wrong a lot in my life. But five years ago, if you were to look at five different conservative groups, you would probably get, and all of them had their top five issues they cared about. You'd probably get 25 different issues. Some of them cared about school choice. Some of them cared about, uh, First Amendment rights. Some of them cared about gun rights. So they all were into different stuff. Some were into abortion. If I look now, when I talk to these groups, I have never seen a more united front. Every single one of them has the exact same top five issues, CRT in schools. I mean, there's still some classics on there, like Second Amendment and First Amendment rights, obviously. But, um, you know, masking and going back to school and keeping the schools open. I mean, they are, everyone is agreeing. And the reason that I think that being a writing candidate in this cycle is a, is a real thing is that everybody seems to be in tune to this. They, they, they may not be active. They may not be going to meetings, but they've heard of it. They don't want it. I mean, you see that, the, the polling on this, nobody in America wants this. I mean, you've got a sliver, maybe 10%, 10, 12% that are pushing and everybody else is saying, what are we doing? And I think when they go to the polls, as long as they, you can get your name out there and you can get them to know who you are and they know that you're trying to stand against the things that none of us want. They're going to be happy that there's an alternative. They're going to be happy. There's going to be somebody up there fighting for the right things for the kids. And I, I really believe in the school district, like you did, Joe, because it's a non-paying position. There's, there's not a really a self-serving motive here. Like it's, it's a lot of meetings. It's a lot of time. You don't make any money. I mean, anybody who does this, and I believe that even of the people I disagree with on the board now, they're doing it because they believe in what they're doing. Whether or not I agree with them or not is irrelevant. I still respect them for the fact that they volunteer their time. And they're trying to make the changes that they think are right. I just vehemently disagree with the changes they're trying to make. And I, I think the people of Wilson School District and, uh, in Spring Township will agree with me.
Think it's beautiful. Anything else you want to say to wrap it up?
No, just that you guys are awesome. Thank you so much for having me. I really appreciate it.
Thanks. One last thing, if we could get you to say just real quick. So we, um, I want to compile a video that shows parents, not video.